Call the meeting to order. Roll call of Alderman.
Heisler.
Here.
Kinsella.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Anderson. Redgewitz.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Solzey.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Seibert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Arlo.
So, Belinda Holt and Rob Alderman, so we have two aldermen sitting. Roll call Department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Bar Chief Langson.
Here.
Mike Flynn.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitre. Tim Gregwitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider. Meander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Holt.
Here.
Chuck Schaper.
Here.
Bob Sable.
Here.
Chiefs out in the hall, Jamie is excused. I think, have you mentioned she there maybe? I did not. Didn't have to, did me.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Jim Schneider.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if you would please stand and join us in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening. Before we open public participation, I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to appear, but sadly, one of our longtime aldermen, Stan Sezdeck, passed away yesterday. And Alderman Sezdeck was a retired assistant bar chief in the city of East St. Louis for thirty-seven years and served on the city council from nineteen ninety-five until nineteen, until two thousand eleven. And Stan was very diligent in serving his ward, his constituents, and I would ask that we would pause for a moment of silence in Stan's behalf. The details should be available tomorrow morning, but as I received them late this afternoon, visitation for Stan Sezdeck will be Thursday from four to eight at Curris Funeral Home, and there'll be a mass at nine fifteen a.m. at Saint Henry's Catholic Church on Friday morning. So, I share that with you. We certainly, you know, our thoughts go to his family, Joanne and the kids. He was a great, great public servant. So, with that said, sad we started the meeting, but we will start now with opening it up to, there's no public hearing this evening, but open up public participation. If you would like to speak of public participation, wait till I call on you, please step up to the microphone, please give your name and address, and try to keep your remarks to about two to three minutes so we can get everything in tonight. Anybody would like to step up? Yes, sir.
Michael Heckberg, seven oh one Centerville. Just talk about buying a hundred percent renewable energy from wind farms in northern Illinois and solar farms in Texas. Let me say this, that even if we pay these companies directly for their power, there's no physical way to get it delivered to Belleville. Electricity diminishes as travel through power lines making it impossible for Belleville to use energy from these producers. This is why there are so many local power plants throughout the United States. In Belleville, the majority of the power we consume comes from local coal-powered generators. Even if Belleville decides to go a hundred percent renewable, the majority of the power we consume will still come from local coal-powered generators. This is why there's no big uproar from the coal industry. The additional eight tenths of a penny we would pay for renewable energy would be used to purchase carbon credits. The coal miners know they won't lose any jobs if we purchase carbon credits. In theory, carbon credits work this way. The increased fee the citizens would pay would be used to purchase about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of carbon credits each year. These carbon credits and the money associated with them could be given to wind farms or solar farms to offset their high cost of production. The wind generates power left a guy in Chicago to turn on his lamp without consuming electricity from a coal-powered generator. Likewise, a solar plant in Texas. Even though here in Belleville, we continue to consume just as much coal in our local power plants somewhere in the world, a guy is able to turn on a lamp powered by renewable energy, and we subsidize the cost. Now, I say this how carbon credits work in theory, because during my research, I found stories after story about how companies scam the carbon credit system to get rid of it without reducing greenhouse gases. You can do your research, just do a Google search for carbon credit abuse. Aaron Whitley of Metro East Green Party made a comment at the last city council meeting that if we were to opt for a hundred percent renewable energy, we could refer to Belleville as a green city and apply for otherwise not available grant money. It should be noted that the city would have to apply for and receive a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of green energy grant money each and every year just to break even. It's just not a good business decision to ask the taxpayers to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year if we aren't able to show a justifiable return on that money. Thank you.
The next person, yes, sir, in the back of the room, please step forward.
Leo Disgriffen, three oh five North Charles Street, Beale, Illinois. Honorable Mayor, this tribunal, I just want to thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to have a meeting with you on the fifteenth. I think it was pretty productive. We didn't see Iow and everything, but I think it was a step in the right direction. I respect the fact that you had Mr. Barfield there, Lord Mr. Sable, Assistant Chief Barker, Mr. Jerry Turner was there for a minute, but he had to leave, Mr. Flynn, and everybody else who was in attendance. It's not every day I can get an audience with you, Mayor, and I appreciate it. You showed a lot of growth in my point of view because you realize that for this city to survive, we've got to capitalize on the diversification of everybody. We've got different people from different backgrounds, different ethnic, religious, origins, et cetera, et cetera. And if we're going to survive here, we've got to be inclusive. We can't lock everybody up like I mentioned. We've got to give these young African-American kids something to do. My frustration is a lot of the community frustration. My question to this tribunal is what can we do to assist, to work together? This should be a time of building, not destroying. We're trying to work together. We take pride in our community. I know Chief Clay is busy with a lot of concerns. I know he don't have the time to address a lot of issues, but I appreciated him for giving me an opportunity to express some of my concerns, and I'm just so happy today that I feel as though I was included into some things that's happening. I think we've got a great city here. I think the best is yet to come. And again, Mayor, I really appreciate you for giving me an opportunity to express my concerns with you. I'm not going to take much of your time, I just got off of work, but I want to say this from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you. I'm here to work with you, not to work against you. If there's anything I can do for anybody in this room, because I'm just like Will Rogers, I never met a person that I didn't like. I try to work with everybody. And again, I want to thank you for extending me the opportunity to have a meeting with you because I know you guys are very busy. God bless you. I wish you the best in all your endeavors, both privately and professionally. Thank you.
Keep working together, littlest, don't you do? Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back of the room.
My name is Alex, and you're in the seventh oh four East D Street in Belleville. And before I start, I just wanted to say that, well, as said, the first speaker is completely incorrect. All of our electrical networks in the country are all connected, they're all interstate commerce and governed by the federal government, and it's pretty much like a giant pool. You know, you take your energy out and you put it in, so it doesn't matter if we're getting energy from Northern Illinois wind turbines, it's all going into one big pot, and we're all taking it out from one big pot. Now, about three years ago, this city pledged to buy renewables, by becoming a clean city. And after that, we got leaf burning began, and because of that, Belleville's just won a major air quality award. Now, we're on this path, and we shouldn't get off of it. We're now a university town, and college students, professors, young families, young businesses, people who want to invest in Belleville, they want to live somewhere where there's clean, renewable energy. And you know, if we don't come to, if folks don't come to agreement, and they don't want to put all their eggs in one basket and buy a hundred percent green energy, then why not buy fifty percent or do something? I think this is something we really need to invest in. We need to do it for our children and our future on this planet. I mean, the East Coast was just hit by Irene last year. This year, we've had Sandy Griffin and the biggest drought in probably five hundred years. Obviously, climate change is happening, and it needs to be addressed at local level. Thank you.
Store nine hundred, three eighteen South Twenty-Ninth Street, Belleville. Yeah, this has become a university town, now a university thing, so they can tell Belleville what to do. I called the university the other day, they've got a whole bunch of females working here, I think, that got a bad case of PMS. They're real snotty. And I was arrested for, I used to take my dog for eight years, I walked my dog behind and in front of the school. Now, when a person my age does something for eight years every day, it's kind of hard to change. Well, anyway, some of these Nazis, they're unions, Leninwood, said I couldn't walk my dog there anymore. Well, I got arrested, I was called a crippled old man because I had a cane, whether the cane or just the walking stick. And he said, "You ought to be, you know, in hospital or old folks home or something." Well, I got, I paid a hundred, a hundred twenty-five dollar fine for that, and then a few months later, I fell in a three or four-foot deep hole that Leninwood refused to fix, it was right next to a sidewalk, and they had twenty-four hours notice of this hole, and they said, "Don't worry about it, it's none of your business." So now, I called Leninwood the other day, I figured we're all evened up. I paid my fines, they didn't, I didn't charge them, I didn't get hurt, the hole they filled up finally, I guess. Now, they're telling me that I can't even go to Leninwood when they have a public function such as a political rally, and I think that's, I believe that's illegal to borrow a person from a public function. They say, "Well, that's a private school, we can borrow anybody we want." But when you have a private or a public, a function open to the public, I think unless you're a hardened criminal, I don't, I don't think you have a right to borrow you from something like that.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, you're done, yeah.
You've got about a minute.
Okay. Well, I'm going to have to take legal action on this. They, they come to Belleville, bought Belleville for a dollar, built this multi-million-dollar school system for a dollar, then they had the nerve to charge Belleville a hundred fifteen thousand to fix the tennis courts. And they, and Belleville evidently paid it because I just kind of learned from their lawyer a couple of months ago, stated that Belleville did pay a hundred fifteen thousand for the tennis courts.
It was all part of the agreements, too.
Well, it's a bad deal, I think.
I would beg to differ with you, but you know, you're duly noted, and I think we're at about three minutes.
We're going to have to take legal action.
Well, you certainly have that right, and you can do that.
Thank you.
Back of the room, the lady is first in the back, and then we'll move our way around.
Hi, Erin Whitley, seven one five Forest Avenue in Belleville. I'm here tonight to speak for green energy. I just want to say that I think that this warm evening in December kind of highlights why we should start considering investing in renewable sources. And, you know, it's not really a debate on climate change anymore, it's pretty much a sealed deal, and there are positive steps that we can take towards it, and I think that we should consider that in our vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, you're next, and we'll move on to you. Either one, go ahead. We'll get you both.
Jim Travickton, fourteen forty of Olafash Avenue. I've been following this electrical aggregation from the beginning, and one thing that puzzles me is they say that Ameron only uses seven, eight percent green energy. And if they had the price match, if they dropped theirs and we're using fifty percent green energy, how are we going to match down with that little thing if we're using the more expensive green energy? The other thing is, we've always been counting the cheapest electricity. Now, if the green energy is in the bid for the lowest responsible bidder, then that's the way we should go, but with your resolution that you passed last week, thirty-one twenty-two, it says that you have to enter with the lowest responsible bidder, so I don't think you have a choice of whether you want to go fifty percent or a hundred percent. If the green energy is in with the lowest bid, then that's the one you've got to take.
And I guess, in this conversation with someone this week, I guess one of the interpretations of what's responsible, too, could be also responsible as to our responsibility to the environment. I've had, you know, I've had people say to me, and I think we, you know, we certainly are looking at saving people money, we're certainly been open to dialogue here tonight and past evenings about doing what we believe is right for the, for the environment and in the future. We've certainly taken some steps here in the city in recent years to start to become a leader or a partner in this, so I appreciate your comments, and I think there'll be a little bit more discussion by the council tonight.
The only thing is, if the, what did I chain of thought, the, the way the resolution was written, it almost locks you in, you might have to go that way the first time, and then the second time rewrite your resolution to include that.
Okay, we'll talk to the attorney about that. Sir, in the back of the room, you're next.
Bill Barton, six seventeen Ithaca Street. Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members, as a father of three young children, I'm keenly interested in clean air, renewable sources of energy, and a firm foundation for our local energy economy as we move into the future. The city of Belleville takes its name from the French beautiful city. As such, I urge this council to fulfill the promise of its name. We are already a beautiful city, but I would suggest that we can become more beautiful. This is not merely an environmental matter, it is also an economic and technological matter. Let us move confidently forward, take up the challenge of clean and renewable energy, and become a beacon to the rest of Illinois, dare I say, the nation, perhaps even the world, by adopting one hundred percent renewable energy. Let us not naysay and argue about problems, but instead develop solutions and demonstrate our quality as a community. I urge this council to continue to show strong leadership and create jobs, be good stewards of our environment, and go confidently into a greener and brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Bob White, twenty-four nineteen Pro Tour Drive. And I attended the meeting last week, and we're talking about the renewable part of the energy, and what I took away from this, and tell me if I'm wrong, was that no matter if we build with a hundred percent, fifty percent, thirty percent, or whatever, green energy, that will not affect what we actually receive. I have nothing against green energy. I like, I like beautiful air, like anybody else, but I, as a taxpayer, would prefer that we don't buy the green energy until we can actually receive it and use it. I think it's more of a, of a cloud thing, a feel-good thing, than it is reality.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry I'm dressed like this, I was busy earlier today and just gave an antiseptic commitment. Hi, I'm Christine Masson, I live on one forty-eight, it's M-A-S-S-O, and nobody spells it right, one forty-eight Bradford Place. I'm disabled, and I have done some research on the green energy, and I went to Chicago this year, and I see the beautiful windows up near Chicago, and they were working, and I think as a disabled person, I would love to see energy, green energy, and I think it would benefit our community, and I think that more people should be doing this. I'm fifty-three years old, and I do try to recycle, but also, I turn off my lights, I don't live with, there are ways to cut back on our energy consumption, and I think what the city doing, what they're doing with the buildings, I think that's awesome, but I really think that the green energy would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else this evening on public participation? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. And at this point, we're going to go into some presentations, portion of the meeting. I'd like to first, we, a proclamation was brought to my attention, month of December, National Drug and Drug Driving Three-Day Prevention Month, December two thousand twelve. Whereas motor vehicle crashes killed nine hundred and eighteen people in Illinois during two thousand eleven, whereas hundreds of those deaths involve a driver that's carried by alcohol in our drugs. Whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving, and whereas for thousands of families across the state and the nation, holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost, and whereas organizations across the state and the nation are joined with the drive sober or get pulled over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired driving law enforcement efforts. And whereas the community of Belleville, Illinois, is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Division of Traffic Safety, and other traffic safety groups in that effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I'm Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the city of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim December two thousand twelve as Drug and Drug Driving Three-Day Prevention Month in Belleville, Illinois, and do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals and health care providers, schools, and public and private institutions to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving, and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year. It's a very serious matter, I thought when it came to me from being shared from the law enforcement agencies and other agencies, I thought that we needed to share this with the council and the community, so I am happy to read that this evening, and ask that all of us have a safer holiday season by being concerned and doing what we can to, to remind our friends and families to be very safe in their, in their behaviors. At this time, I'd like to ask lady who's no stranger to us, Taylor Monken, to come forward. She is a student at Alto Catholic High School, and Taylor's been here before, she's a part of the Basic Initiative, and she's here tonight to give us the word of the month for December and tell us a few things.
As Mark W. Eckert said, my name is Taylor Monken, I'm a senior at Alto Catholic High School here in Belleville. I've been on the Basic Youth Board for the past four years, and part of the Basic Youth Board's mission is to go out to the community and promote one of the character words every month. So this month, the character word is empathy, and it stands for identifying and understanding others' feelings in order to get along better. I see this as, at Alto, our senior year, we get a go on a senior service project the whole month of January, so I have the opportunity to go to Cardinal Glenn Hospital over in St. Louis, and I see empathy in this way as going to help others understanding their issues that they're going through as well.
Taylor, thank you, and thank you to all the youth from the three, our three high schools who are part of the Basic Initiative. We've learned a lot from, from all of you, and your service to Belleville is to be remembered, and thank you for coming again tonight and sharing those words with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we now move into the regular portion of the meeting, and at this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the regular minutes of the city council meeting held November nineteen, two thousand twelve. Motion by Alderman Heiser, second by Alderman Heiser, any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Claims payroll and disbursements, what's your pleasures?
John, I'd like to make a motion to pay these claims payroll disbursements.
Motion by Alderman Heiser, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Meyer, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Redgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Solzey.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Before I ask for the motion on the zoning board of approval case number seventy, I'd like to ask for a representative, I think Steve Cease is coming forward, who I believe, if I got it correct, Steve, you are the president of the board of directors for St. Paul's Home?
That's correct.
And I'm going to ask Steve to enlighten all of us about this exciting project that we've been talking about for quite a while, I've sat and talked with you many different months, and I'm delighted that you're here tonight. So Steve, why don't you tell us a little bit about what's coming forward here?
Thank you. First of all, I am Steve Cease, I'm the chairman of St. Paul's Home Board. I would like all the members of the home board who are here tonight, please stand. Thank you very much for coming this evening, we appreciate that. We are very excited about a new possibility for Belleville, and that is a new St. Paul's Home. We have been in St. Paul's Home for about eighty-six, a little more than eighty-six years. A number of years ago, we began doing a feasibility study, a facility study, and we realized, we found out that for us to be able to maintain our current campus, we were going to have to put in seventeen billion dollars. And if we did that, we would have the same nursing home that we had with long hallways, rooms on each side, with two beds in each room, and one window. And we decided we could do something better. We began studying some opportunities and some new ideas in senior care, which some folks tonight, I'm going to introduce in just a moment, are going to share with you in greater detail. However, when we decided to do that, the first step we had to decide was, do we want to stay in Belleville, or do we want to move outside of Belleville? And so we did a study, a feasibility study, we looked at our property, we looked at other properties, and we decided that we've been here for eighty-six years, and we want to stay for eighty-six more. So that was the next decision that, that we made. Following that, we began putting together plans, we wanted to do something different, something unique, and what's going to explain to you tonight is something that's very state-of-the-art. We think of state-of-the-art oftentimes as being technological, and while there will be a lot of technology in this new facility, the most important piece of this facility is personalized, individualized care. And you're going to learn about a unique floor plan, that instead of having those long hallways with two beds in a room and one window, and now, many of us have been in the hospital, right? Who gets the window, right? But these are folks who lived there for the rest of their lives many times. And our new, and our new rooms, and our new project, they are called households, and in each household, there are several households, folks will walk into a living room or a hearth room with a fireplace, they will have a kitchen, and there will be about twenty-two individuals who reside in that particular household. They will have their meals in that household kitchen, where that food will be prepared. No more institutional dining room, no more rolling hundreds of people in wheelchairs down to a dining room and then putting them out in the hall for a while, and then moving them back. Each room will be able to accommodate two individuals, but each person will have a window, no exceptions. A very important piece, there'll be a lot more privacy, instead of people being side by side, there are a couple of different room configurations, which I'm sure are going to be explained to you this evening. One other piece that I want to share with you is part of our mission at St. Paul's Home is to be able to provide care for everyone, everyone, not just private pay individuals. So we are in a position to take some charity cases, we do accept Medicare, Medicaid, and you'll, you'll probably hear more about that this evening as well. I think I have said enough. I want to turn this over to Paul Boyer, who is going to share an engineering design with you, and our architect Susan Bruker, and they will do a much better job and give you many more details than I'm able to provide for you. But we're excited about the project. Thank you for hearing us tonight.
Great, Steve. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Boyer, I'm a civil engineering design consultant. I'll be brief, I'm basically handling the site, and I'll turn it over to Susan Bruker to talk more into about the, the, actually Susan.
I think I'm going to hold the door for her.
But anyway, I'll just briefly talk about the site, I'll hold up the site, then I can leave it out if you want to see it. But basically, what it is, St. Paul's doing an expansion, they have approximately an eleven-acre site, they're doing the expansion, a three-acre, a three-story building with a hundred and thirty rooms on the east end of the site. What's designated is bright orange, is basically their existing independent living facility. The new- They're doing the expansion of a three-story building with 130 rooms on the east end of the site. What's designated is bright orange, is basically their existing independent living facility. The new building will be a mixture of skilled care, intermediate care, and sheltered care. That the existing building located basically centered on the site is the current shelter care and intermediate care, both in skilled care. That building will be demolished once the three-story building is constructed. So we're anticipating construction roughly around June 2013, finishing up around August 2014. Once this comes online, this existing building would be brought down. Just roughly over the site, we're doing new parking fields on the south and on the west side of the site. The remainder of the western edge of the site is basically remaining largely undeveloped still. So there's a considerable buffer to the commercial to the west, residential to the south and to the east. And then Susan may get into it more, but basically, this site plan, we're integrating garden areas, cabin areas, a lot of areas for the residents, and we think it will be a huge benefit to them as well. And as part of the site design, we greatly improved the circulation on the site. If you're familiar with the site, there's some pretty steep slopes and so forth, which is difficult for the residents as well. We're redoing those slopes, flattening them out, making them more manageable, improving access and so forth, so we're very excited about it. Then I'll turn it over to Susan.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Susan Bruker. I'm with the Lawrence Group Architects, and I am an architect. I'm also a nursing home administrator, so I love projects like this where we can improve the lives of older people. As Steve says, and Paul, we're doing an addition to the existing independent living, and then tearing the old building down and leaving that undeveloped, even though there's a lot of opportunities for that in years to come. The exterior of the building will be brick to match the existing building, and then cement tissue siding. We're trying to put more brick on the front, and then as you go around the building, we have less and less brick. And here's a picture of how it just tightens together. And there are three floors, and then there's two households per floor. In a household, like Steve was saying, it has a very custom kitchen design, but we are doing these all over. The staff actually does cook in the kitchen, and as time goes on, they do more and more cooking. And sometimes they have residents that can get very involved with cooking and have it be a very important activity of their life. Another thing is that with the dining room and the open kitchen, we don't emphasize the nurse station any longer. The, you know, center in your home for nutrition and socialization is your kitchen and your dining room, not your nurse station. So even though a lot of our residents still spend a lot of time sitting, they are at least sitting in a very nice place. This is an example of some of our activity rooms that are other projects, and then the unit plant, the resident units are usually around the kitchen dining area, but it is still a skilled nursing home. So in that household, we still have soil utility, we still have cleaning utility, we still have linens, we still have staff bathrooms, we have laundry, you know, we have all those things. But we do it home, too. So if you arrange it right, we've seen these projects really change how skilled nursing is thought about. And then last, our unit plant. Even though we still have shared units, like Steve was saying, everybody gets a window. In our corner unit, they share the bathroom, they each have their own closet, their own window, and their own private space. In our toe-to-toe, this isn't much bigger than the old side-by-side, but in a household, you don't have to worry about getting 60 beds in 140 feet. We're only trying to get 22 beds. So we've been able to like turn the side-by-side bed around and point-to-toe dinner. And so now everybody has private space, they still share a bathroom, but they haven't been. And lastly, the bathroom, this is what we call our hospitality institutional bathroom. It looks just like you have in a hotel, except the conveniences are for the nurse, the drawers are for the residents, and then the ability to still add dignity with, you know, independence, the grab bars, all of that, and still be a very beautiful bathroom. That's all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'd like to know if your staff is the original building, is that the administration building? That's left from the Stag Brewery.
We have looked at that possibility, and we already had someone... Oh, I'm sorry, this is a question.
It has to be about the Stag Brewery building, which is not part of this parcel, it's actually over on the other side. So the Stag Brewery office building, it's still going to be standing there.
I'm not talking about the warehouse, I'm talking about the building you have planted in the house. What's the original... Is this the original nursing home building?
It's the original nursing home. It was a home at one point in time. It was the home that was donated to start St. Paul's Home in the 1920s.
That's all.
I just want to say, I asked them to come tonight and to, we haven't had the chance yet, they were waiting until the right time, the home board, in my conversations with them, until they were ready to unveil this, and out of respect for that, we didn't talk about it before then. Tonight, in front of us is the planning and development proposal coming from the zoning board. But I just want to say to the board of directors before we take the vote here, I really appreciate your due diligence, the many conversations we had, your willingness to be candid about what was best for your facility, but to still look at all the possibilities here in Bellevue. And I, for one, am extremely pleased that you're making this commitment, recommitment. St. Paul's Home was my first job in 1972, so I have a very keen place in my heart for the people at St. Paul's Home and for all the years I've visited, and family there as well, my father years ago. So I would tell you that we're very proud to see this institution, this wonderful service, this ministry continue here and what you're proposing tonight. So if there's no other questions for the architect, the engineer, or the board, I would ask at this time that we would proceed with the zoning board of appeals advisory reports. Mr. Turner?
The request is for a special use permit for a planned unit development at 1,021 West East Street in order to allow the addition of a three-story person home building. And the zoning board has recommended unanimously that it be approved.
I'll make a motion that we comply with the recommendation of the zoning board and proper arguments drawn. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any other zoning? Well, that's the only one I have. All right. And I... Do we come up with the arguments tonight already?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Yeah, right there. Okay, let's go on, move on now until we get to the arguments portion. Next item of business, on page two of the agenda, item 11, Alderman Anderson's not here, Mike Highstew, would you handle that?
Your Honor, I'd like to make the following two motions to the master sewer committee and hold on separately. First motion, to approve the long-term control plan construction pay request number 29 from Courtney Luedet, John, and Tuberville Wade Immersion for a total amount of $725,760.17. So move your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on that pay order? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlet.
Motion carries. Alderman Heisler?
Yes, Your Honor. On the behalf of the master sewer committee, I'd like to make the motion to purchase 1128 South Turf Street in the amount of $1,230 for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. So move your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Hayden. Just let me clarify, this is primarily a lot, and I think they said it was 60 by 130 approximately, is that right? And it has a reasonable-sized garage on it. But this is being sold by St. Clair County Tact.
Yes.
And brought to our attention, and this property, we believe, is going to be needed anyway for part of the construction of the next phase of the master sewer plant work that we're doing. And instead of having to maybe pay somebody for a construction easement, we can get the whole property for $1,230. So pretty much a... Pretty much a number. So we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Give those explanations, trying to be... Tie the loose ends here. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlet.
Motion carries. We move on now to a motion to approve the street banner permit for the North Illinois Street entrance to the city of Bellevue from the Home Builders Association of Greater Southwestern Illinois to advertise their annual show to be held March 1 through 1st through 3rd, 2013, at the Bellevue Fairgrounds. Motion for...
I'll second your honor.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heisler, to approve that request. Discussion? All in favor of approving the request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time Alderman Martinson.
Your Honor, on behalf of the finance committee, I move to approve the contract for the M360 project. We're financing through a 12-year lease with Commerce Bank at a 3.15% fixed interest rate. So move, Your Honor.
Second. We have a motion, who is motion by Alderman, who is second?
Mr. Turner.
Second by Alderman Martinson. And I just want to note that the contract, I think with all the going back and forth, Mike's reviewing it, I ask that there's an understanding and including that in case there's any slight adjustments to the contract by the city attorney's advice.
Yeah, I would suggest that the motion simply be amended to make the approval subject to approval by both the engineering department and the legal department.
Is that acceptable?
Acceptable.
We have a motion, we have a second, and this is the first phase of this couple of motions here. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlet.
Motion carries. Steve?
Your Honor, I move to approve except the Sippin Construction Group's proposal to oversee the M360 project, Part II and III of the proposal.
Motion by Alderman Martinson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Meyer. I'm sorry.
Subject to approval of the M360 contract.
Right, and that's subject to the approval of the M360 contract, okay? We have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlet.
Motion carries. Mr. Turner, a few quick questions.
A request from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention to hold their 5K Walk on Saturday, October 13, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m., starting in Indy and Shelby Park.
Are your motions approved?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a discussion? All in favor of approving their request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As a side note, I may say that the run walk this past weekend in the Ginger Grove set a new record of 1,044 participants. So that was unbelievable. Petitions, we have none, resolutions none this evening. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, arguments number 7647, 7651, and 7653. So move your honor. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Heisler. All in favor of reading these three arguments by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Argument's number 7647, a zoning ordinance case number 70, Paul K. Boyer, Civil Engineering Design Consultants.
Motion to approve, arguments number 7647, so move.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Meyer. Discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlet.
Motion carries. Congratulations, St. Paul's Home Board, you're off and running. We're very pleased, and we appreciate your reinvesting in Bellevue after all these years and continuing to serve, so we'll wait to hear from you again soon. Thank you.
In the opposition to the reading, arguments is number 7651 and 7653.
Hearing none, go ahead.
And number 7651, the ordinance approving the final flat Flum Hill Estates Phase 4B, and ordinance number 7653, and ordinance amendment chapter 52 of traffic, the revised ordinances in the city of Bellevue, as amended by amended portions of sections thereof.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Martinson. Discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer. Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlet.
Aye.
Ordinances pass. Unfinished business? Moving on to Miss Lanza's new business.
Yes, Your Honor.
Who's, Sarah, who's going? Alderman Hayden?
Yeah, I want to thank you, Your Honor, for, uh, putting this, uh, item on the agenda for my request, and I want to thank, uh, Alderman Schneider for, uh, co, uh, sponsoring my request to put it on the agenda, Your Honor. Um, since last, uh, meeting, and we had the discussion on the, uh, green energy, which I, I totally grasp, I totally understand the concerns and needs, uh, the traditional energy, I, I totally grasp, I totally understand the needs of people that live and work here in, in, in the, uh, coal mines in Southern Illinois. The bottom line is, based on the discussion that we have received, we don't know where the energy that we're going to be buying is going to come from, and the number one thing is, the people first voted this issue down, and a lot of it had to do with misunderstanding, uh, lack of, uh, of, uh, public, uh, information. The second time around, the people passed it, and we've been discussing with, with various people that I've had a chance to talk to, Your Honor, the, the number one thing in my mind, from the safest bet, is the people passed this because they want the lowest rate, and they want to save as much money as possible. There was nothing on the, uh, ballot talking about green energy, traditional energy, or nothing. It was basically a straightforward question, do you want to save money? And with that understood, uh, Your Honor, I make a motion to recommend, if we're going to prove, uh, per item B that I asked for on the agenda, uh, for you and Ms. Fields to be our representative, but I make a motion to recommend to our representatives at the public bidding that we accept the lowest possible rate in savings for the taxpayer, and that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I'll open it up for discussion. Uh, I'll start, just to say that, um, I, I respect everybody's comments tonight. I have had a fair amount of calls and emails to my office from people who have, not to say that some haven't expressed your comments just now, but I have to say there's been, eh, quite a few people have called about the green energy and, and wishing, making their comments known that we would consider it. Um, I think some of the, uh, education that, uh, the group did talked about the, the green energy component. Um, I think that, you know, Emily, do you want to, do you want to explain a little bit about what she found out today, and do you want to kind of go over a few of these things? Because we, I asked her, and she talked to Philip Carrigan today, who's at another city meeting tonight about, um, Publicary. So, why don't you, why don't you just kind of go through a couple, and then you can kind of, uh, ball this over, and then, then take all these things into consideration?
Sure. Uh, will we first start off by saying that, um, I'll echo against what was said during the floor of the presentation. Um, the Bellville did just receive a care for air report, uh, to work as the second annual air health forum. It was on November second. Um, Bellville really is recognized as the leader in St. Clair County in these green initiatives. Um, we're the first city in St. Clair County, and she does remind me to sign on to Cool City, um, under the mayor's, um, the U.S. Conference of Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement. Um, and as such, we agreed to do things to lessen our carbon footprint as a, as a city. Um, so we, we had leaf burning, um, we've got lower cylinder, uh, police cars, and we're in our housing department. Um, we are getting ready to bicycle city buildings probably next year or so, so our employees can, if I need to go into the Parks Department, I can take a bike instead of a car or walk, um, to make it easier, um, for us to get around in that way. Um, we are retrofitting buildings, putting in more energy-efficient fixtures.
Today was an example of that again with three sixty and three sixty.
Exactly. And we also, I think, implemented no idling policies, um, in, in many areas. So, the next thing, in terms of what we're doing to move toward our commitment to lessening our carbon footprint as a city, is to take a look at Cool Cities two point O, and that's something that I'll be working on over the next year or so. Um, it's kind of the next step, um, to the Cool Cities thing that we, that we signed back in two thousand nine. Uh, we're being asked to look at, look at this again for the future, so, and see where we're at and where we need to go. So, we work on that over the next year or so. Um, in terms of the renewable versus non-renewable, um, that's, uh, being discussed tonight, um, it is correct that when we purchase, um, our energy, we have the option to purchase renewable energy credits. Um, those credits will ensure that there is more green energy being put on the grid. Uh, when energy is put on the grid and we buy that energy as consumers, there's no way to tell if it was produced by coal energy or renewable energy. The only way to do that is to produce it on, onsite, buy it onsite, um, you know, wind turbine or solar power. Um, so, so there really is no way to tell that. Likewise, there's no way to tell that, um, our energy is local. Once energy is on the grid, an electron is an electron, and there's no way to tell where it came from or how it was produced. So, uh, the only way to ensure that in the future, um, we will have the ability to get, for sure, get green energy, is to participate and purchase these renewable energy credits now. It will put more green energy on the grid so that we can, we can get that down the line. So...
Okay, well, I, I think, and one, one thing to talk to Philip Carr today, he did say that, um, from, from his, his belief is about fifty percent of the cities right now are for sure going to go with the, the, the green, um, component. Um, and I hear what everybody's saying. I, I understand that, you know, um, that, you know, it was talked about from a standpoint of, uh, of, uh, saving people money, of course. The difference, I think, from what, uh, what, what Philip said today was, if, if we went and agreed to go no higher than three percent, right, Emily?
Right.
Um, it would be a maximum difference, maximum, of about costing seventy cents a month more that you would not, you would put, you would let, not save, a little less save, it'd be about seventy cents a month for a household.
Right.
To go green. So, i- you know, you figure that times your, so it's probably about eight dollars and forty cents a year, and that's not here, but he don't, he doesn't believe it's going to be any more than that.
Right, we don't believe the price difference is going to be any more than three percent. To give you an example, when Glenn Carvin and Alton did this in the spring, um, in May, I guess, of this year, when they went out for bid, um, their traditional energy costs, I guess, the rate they were at is about, um, sixty cents to kilowatt hour, or, I, wait, that's right, I'm looking at my notes. Don't let me get that wrong. It was about, um, well, to break it down here, to go renewable versus non-renewable, Glenn Carvin and Alton, the difference was seven hundredths of a cent, uh, difference, and they, they were, it was less than two percent.
So I think their, they came in about one point eight percent.
Right, they, they're different, they're price difference between renewable and non-renewable.
And, and I, I, I guess, once again, I think there is a, um, some philosophical thought here. Um, I like the fact that, first of all, and it was brought up that last time, why, you know, last time it didn't pass, and we explained that people that we had signed on was kind of the last one thing, and then the company was sold before they ever started to educate the public or do any P.R. work, so it was not discussed at all, not, and, and the whole thing went flat, and it lost. This time, I believe this company did a good job in, in advertising, educating, getting to the newspaper editorial staff to better explain, and editorial came back this time positive, uh, that maybe we should give this a try. So, I, I, I think you learn every day. I didn't realize at first, when we first started talking about this, um, about all the green possibilities and where it was going. Talking to other mayors, several of them have said to me, hey, we're looking at this because we really think it's the right thing to do, to buy into, uh, taking responsibility, uh, towards, um, the environment. And, and I, I always share it with you tonight because, you know, for, for potentially no more than, and maybe less than, seventy cents a month, as a, a father of four children, uh, and a lifelong resident here, I do believe personally, it's probably the right thing to start working towards and, and make happen. Uh, so it's, it's your choice. We got a motion and a second to...
Can I just...
Hold on, I'm not done yet, and then I'll let you talk. Uh, we have a motion, a second to, um, to not, to go with strictly traditional and not allow the green this time, uh, but, but I'm still open for discussion to hear everybody out, how they feel. And I'll start with Gabby.
Uh, did you say, Emily, that, uh, you're not sure how much coal produces of this, right?
What was the question?
Oh, uh, clean energy. You said, you didn't know how much coal actually produced of this energy?
Well, there's no way to tell, um, what energy, whether the energy we're purchasing is produced by coal or renewable or something.
It is true that we don't see the solar or the, uh, the, the turbine in this area at this point in time, so I guess it's kind of assumed that we're primarily, but we don't know that for absolute, and, and asking them, like they said, when you buy it, it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's not quite a guarantee. It's kind of assumed by some, but, but, but I think it's the idea that you're becoming a part of the bigger picture to, to say, look, and we're concerned about our environment, we're making a statement as a city, which this council voted on, what we did to Cool Cities and all that, uh, we're saying that we're going to start to, little at a time, try to do things to help the environment. Now, we can sit here all night and talk about global warming, uh, but whether you believe in it or not, or whether you study it or not, uh, I think it's pretty clear that some things are happening with the, with the, uh, with, with the climate around the world. It, it certainly deserves some attention as to how we move forward in the future. So, um, I think, yes, Gabby?
Uh, for reading, I was asked, and, you know, they say, you know, the, you know, Southern Illinois, that our big commodity is coal.
Sure.
And that keeps a lot of people working. Uh...
And this is...
They're saying it's clean, clean coal.
Right, and they're, they're, you're hearing more and more about that, but I think the main thing I understand, this would be a percentage of green, right?
Well, if we can opt to go a hundred percent green, or we can go fifty-fifty, or we can go all traditional.
Okay, but, but I guess my point is, is that it's, there's no guarantee that it's going to go, that coal's not going to be a part of the mix, and that coal's going to be...
Right, and we will...
It's not going to drastically affect the coal industry overnight.
The electricity at your house will still need probably, you know, a large part coal power.
We don't, I don't think you're going to see, and I don't, you know, the, the experts aren't here right now, but we're not going to see, uh, the coal industry in Southern Illinois negatively impacted immediately because of this. Um, there's a long way to go in developing this. However, it's, it's, what basically boils down to tonight, does Bellville in this early stages want to be part of the, of the group of cities that stands up and says, we want to work towards being a part of, uh, the renewable energy sources, and, and, and start to slowly work towards, uh, doing what's right for the environment, and, and, and getting on the right page, and it's going to take time, and it's going to take a number of years.
And really, do we want to continue to be seen as a leader in this area, in St. Clair County and in Southwest Florida?
And we have obtained that leadership, uh, status in recent years with some of the initiatives we've been doing, and it's all kind of good. Dean?
Emily, could you explain, uh, something we were talking about, and the fact that what the carbon credits do is actually considered an investment in green energy?
Right, when you buy these renewable energy certificates, um, you are essentially offsetting the cost of these, uh, companies to produce that type of energy. Um, so, so we're not actually purchasing energy produced by a wind turbine, but we are, um, contributing to those, uh, those costs of that energy produced.
To the further development and to encourage it. There, it is, it's a relatively new initiative, and I think more and more people are understanding that it's something that we need to be looking towards and moving towards, and it'll, it'll also, you can get this debate too, and I don't, I'm not encouraging that at the moment, but it is a way to slowly get our country more independently, uh, on our feet with not being so dependent on, uh, on traditional, uh, fossil fuel, uh, various, uh, energy sources.
Another way to look at it is that by purchasing these renewable energy credits, we're essentially, um, guaranteeing that our energy demand as a city is being offset, um, by these, these credits. So, um, we're purchasing the same amount of renewable energy, um, as we are creating a demand for energy. So, so we're offsetting that equally.
And I wouldn't be even entertaining considering this if it, and I'm not saying, I'm not, I, I, I respect however the vote goes, but I, I think for the potentially, no, but he felt real comfortable in saying not more than seventy cents a month difference, or less than that.
Approximately.
Approximately, for us to make this move, I simply ask, is it not an important statement for us, that this city can continue to be a, a leader with other cities, to look at doing what we believe, what I tend to believe is the future and the right thing to do down the road far as, uh, this, this country? Uh, I think Lilly was next.
Yes, I want to read a thing in the article in the paper. You just had to say, would it be more for us to go with green energy in that, but I think we need to think of the people, um, in the, August twenty-first, two thousand twelve. If voters approve the referendum, the city can, the city could bargain for cheaper electricity supply prices on behalf of the residents who do not opt out of such a program. Alderman also approved contract with Good Energy as an energy management consultant, company to oversee the process. The company fees will be passed on to the electric supplier. And then, every time, it's been in the paper, it's been talking about the cheaper part. If we want the citizens of Bellville to have faith and trust in us, we have to do what they voted. They voted under the understanding that it was for cheaper electricity, not for green or traditional. They were voting on the cheapest, and if we don't honor their wishes, then why do they even vote us in? Because then we just do what we want. The people want the cheaper. That is what they voted on.
Hold on a second.
I respect both sides, and I understand them, and I guess the thing that goes through my mind is, it looks like we were talking about a seventeen-month contract possibility, that this is a new program, and I guess the way that I was thinking is that if you look at the traditional for the lowest saving for seventeen months, we could come back at that seventeen months and have the study on the green and go full green at that point. I, I, I guess that's, if this was a twenty-four month, and that was the greatest savings, I guess I would be leaning another way, but the seventeen months is still, but this is something new, and I guess looking at the, the possibility of getting into this and finding out what we're doing, getting the lowest savings at this point, and then giving us during that seventeen months to really get a full, I'm not sure I totally understand the green, uh, uh, get a better understanding of it, and then moving forward with it, at that point, we, I would feel better about it.
Yeah, that's right. Alderman, Alderman?
Yeah, I agree with, uh, I think that right now we should go with what the people voted, and I think it's too much a feel-good part of the green at this point, and I think we need to look at that.
Right, and so, the seventeen months is what we're, what I'd be going for, is that right? Well, we, we, what I was asking, talking to Philip, and what I explained in the last meeting, was that you would give Linda and I the flexibility to choose seventeen or twenty-four months, depending on when we go next week, or, what is it, twelve?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. When we go to Grand City and meet with the other cities, once the, once that day shakes out what the majority want to do. I mean, if the majority are after seventeen months, I think we go with seventeen months. If the majority of the cities are saying, hey, we want to go two years, I think we want to be, you know, we want to, so I, I think we need a little bit of flexibility there to choose those exact months, and I don't, you know, I wouldn't know until we get there how the, you know, what might happen at that point, that somebody makes a statement or brings something out that would lock us into what we want to choose. But I think we would, we would go, agree to go along with what the majority of the cities that day. And that was Dr. Selsby said, after seventeen months, it's going to be changed, and I... Well, it's got to be, it's got to be, and even Philip said, he suggested not locking in three years. He suggested seventeen months, twenty-four months.
And we're talking about seventy cents a month over this, I mean, are there three choices, one hundred percent, fifty-fifty, or zero?
Yeah, there's, there's only, right, there's only three choices, and the difference is that I'm talking about, that seventy cents a month is between a hundred percent renewable and a hundred percent traditional. So, in talking to Philip today, it's estimated that, you know, most, or, you know, many households in the city will save on average a hundred and eighty dollars a year, and he thinks that's a conservative estimate. Um, so we're talking about saving seven dollars a year less, and we're still talking about households saving a hundred and seventy-three dollars a year, and then on average...
Fifty-fifty, green, traditional, so...
Probably somewhere in between there.
Thirty-five cents.
Sure.
If my math is correct. So, Alderman Selsby, I'm talking about...
So, yeah, just to give you an idea, I've been, been actual dollars.
But after this, if we want to talk about green and educate the people now, do you want the green or do you want the traditional, let it up to them. But that was not in the bargaining for this. When they were voting on this, it was for the cheapest.
Yeah.
And it, but it makes us look bad, that we're not listening to the people, then why would we even put it on?
It makes us look bad for not going green, too.
No, because...
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't, because that's not what they voted on. They voted on the cheapest. Every one of those articles over, that's what it's about.
Okay, okay. Yes, Alderman?
It seems to me that, that the article said cheaper, that doesn't mean cheapest, and we always look for the most responsible, and we usually think of a company that's responsible enough for farm, but we also think it could be thought of as being responsible to the environment.
Well, it's true, it's...
I think I'm going to have people in my ward who are going to say, if we don't go green, say, why did you go green? And I'm going to have people, if we go green, say, why did you go for the cheapest? So, I think that if we're going to, to go green at all, we have to put a cap on it, so that when you're there, it's more...
Well, that's what, and that's what we said. We, we would, what we said today, um, if you would defeat this motion, I would ask, if, if hypothetically you would, I would say that we wouldn't want to do anything that would be any greater than three percent difference. It would, it would be three percent or less, and, and I, I would think that we might be able to lock it in lower than three percent, but if it gets over that, we don't want, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even recommend it. However, I, I, I hear and appreciate everything everybody's saying, but this is not meant to be, um, an argument here. I think the question really relies on this. We're moving in the right direction to help We're moving in the right direction to help the consumers save a little money. The question since has been really brought forward, and I would have to say that I think there's been more people speaking up for the green, but nothing, don't get me wrong, I'm not sitting here asking for that be the vote, but I would have to say, as elected officials, I think women, questions may be proposed, we have choices to make in our positions, you know, what is best? And, you know, and I guess you can interpret that, what is the most responsible for that, you could include the environment in there. It wasn't exactly. I think, you know, you're right, you're both right. There's things in that article, and you look at articles, you can interpret them either way. But I think we have a chance to be on board as a front-runner again, as we've been in recent years, to be in the green initiative, and we have a chance to be a front-runner as a city to continue to say, you know what, we're going to continue to lead the way and move forward in this direction. Or we can sit back and say, we'll go 17 months, 24 months, and then we'll look at it next time. Either one, I don't think we're terribly wrong, it's just some philosophy. Yes?
Yeah. Another point, and I agree with Alderman, Dr. Sillsby. I'd be more glad to look at the green issue when we get a little more time to study, get a full understanding of it, and get the people's feedback on it. I think as we weigh the costs and benefits that you're putting out there, and we've got business men sitting out there in this audience right now, you're, some seem to try to minimize it, that we're only talking, you know, 70 cents, $7, you know, per year. The business people out there need to realize, you know, you take that $7 times the number of homes in the city of Bellevue, and we are potentially stopping $150,000, $200,000 that could be spent with our taxpayers' money in our own community. And I think that that's a significant amount of money at the present.
It's a point of view that I respect, Joe. And just like I think it's a point of view that those who sat here to continue to be in the forefront of fighting for the green initiative, is the people who want to be out in front of, those who want to be out in front to set the tone for what they believe is right for the future of our kids and grandkids. Right, there's not really a totally right and wrong, it's just opinions here.
I agree with Alderman, Sillsby, after the statement. I do feel that, you know, Bellevue wasn't built with coal, that's why the city's here, because the city's been mining coal, you know, it built an industry, and we are energy independent with coal in the state. We have 300 years of coal still left, and it's a lot.
Okay, so, if there's no other discussion, I'm going to, we have a motion by Alderman, hey, right Mrs. Fields?
Yes.
To...
For traditional energy.
To purchase 100% traditional energy. And Joe, did you include in your motion for a 17-month period, or was that not included?
I, your, your, I didn't initially, but I can amend a motion if Alderman Schneider will accept it to allow, to negotiate a minimum of 17 months, no more than 24 months.
And that would be helpful to have a little flexibility.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Everybody understands the motion. If you vote yes, you're voting for sending Linda and I to Granite City next week to say, yes, we want 100% traditional at this time.
Should we say the lowest rate?
Well, I said the lowest rate, what if, what if, what if the green would come in lower? That's my motion. The lowest rate, the lowest rate.
So, not traditional energy?
No, we should say, you're right, is that acceptable?
My motion was the lowest rate.
Is that acceptable, Lily?
Yes.
Okay, so the lowest rate, it's a good point. It's a good point, it could happen. I don't know if it will, but it could happen. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, and I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Yes.
Kinsella?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Rudowitz?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Sillsby?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Seibert?
No.
Martinson?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Musgrove?
Yes.
Arley?
Yes.
What's the count, Mrs. Fields?
Well, there's three no's.
Three no's, and we got, we have 14 here, so we've got 11 i's. So, we're sending Linda and I to the bid opening to take the lowest rate, the lowest type of energy, the cost, and to have flexibility to choose between 17 to 24 months. Everybody understand that? The motion carries. Okay, moving on.
I'd be generous, the motion actually approved you and this feels to be a representative city.
Okay.
And I assume...
We have a motion here. We have a second by Alderman Schneider. Everybody understand that's to give the mayor and the city clerk the authority to sign those contracts based on what we were designated to do here this evening. Roll call.
Is that Hayden and Schneider?
Yes, same as before.
Heisler?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Seibert?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Warner Field claims the amount of $16,323. What's your pleasure?
Thank you, Pedro.
Motion by Alderman, Seibert, second by Alderman, Heisler to approve the Warner Field claim. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Seibert?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arley?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I ask for a motion to go on executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation, settlement of a workman's compensation claim, and property, possible sale of property, or only our transfer of property, let me say that. Five minutes, you said? I'll give you about three and a half. All in favor of moving, going to executive session for the purposes, and by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Need a brief reset, make it back in regular session. And we have a couple items of business to move forward. I first of all ask for approval to instruct our attorney to settle the workman's comp claim that was brought forward in executive session. We're not going to go into the details at this time because we don't have a final signature, but I'm asking for a motion to give him authorization to settle that claim if we can, based on his recommendation. Motion by Alderman. Kinsella, who made the second?
I did.
Alderman Schneider made the second. Any discussions on that motion? Roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Seibert?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arley?
Motion carries. I would ask the council to keep those pieces of information confidential until we get that case officially settled, okay? Everybody understand that? At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve conveying city property at 800 East Washington Street to the Bellevue Historical Society. Some move?
Second.
This was the blue, Alderman Hart. Alderman Hart, the second was by Alderman Schneider. Discussion. This is a lot that the city owns, and we would be conveying it to the Bellevue Historical Society. Roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Rudowitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sillsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Seibert?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arley?
Aye.
Arley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next motion, I'd ask for a motion to settle a litigation regarding 804 East Washington Street that's pending, and that the Bellevue Historical Society reimbursed the city $967.50 for the out-of-pocket expenses, mostly which was asbestos survey, and also that as their board approved, they would pay the city of Bellevue for the cost of the brick sidewalk that they requested on, in front of its residents. Now, with that being said, included in the motion, I'm asking you to accept that we would waive the attorney's fees that the court said we legally could have recouped, and that this would settle the matter so that they can close on the house. They do have a seller, a buyer, they have a seller, and that this would end the court litigation that was pending. Do I hear a motion for that pending all those, all those things I explained? So move this as recommended by the mayor and staff.
Second.
Motion by Alderman, a, second by Alderman Schneider. Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
They will, this motion here was to, they will pay us the $967.50, they will pay us for the brick sidewalk. We will dismiss the fund recommendation that I told Mr. Bets today, and I would ask you that we would dismiss any attorney's fees, which could have been as much as $4,000, over $4,000, that we would be forgiving them. And that the other part of this motion should be that they will, when they get everything closed, get less of a breakdown, because there will be a profit earned of this house. And I did, in executive session, state, ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Fields and I went and toured the house last week, and they've done an excellent job. It's very nicely done, and truly, after a long ordeal, it's been something that's very, very positive for that neighborhood. Part of this motion I'm asking though is that there is a kind of pay sheet, or whatever you want to call it.
Itemized list of expenses.
And understanding that the profit that they will accumulate on this, which will be some, is going to go towards the Garfield Street project at Garfield and Meskuda, and 11th and West Main Street project that they currently have underway. So that everybody understands, we didn't just grant them a chunk of money that they're making, but it's going back, we reinvested into other projects in the city. So with that, it's...
And the city would also get a copy of the closing statement.
And we get a copy of the closing statement also, Larry, that's part of the motion.